All right. Ooh. Good. Turn that down a little.
Fix the non-working problem.
There we go. All right, I'm going to call the order. The January 8th special meeting of Forest Hill Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in agenda item six. Now, would you please stand and join me as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome to Sean and Kelly, our new trustees.
Thank you.
I hope you find this to be a wonderful and rewarding and fun experience.
I like it.
And welcome back to everybody. I hope everybody had a good Christmas, New Years, all of that. Yeah. Mike, it's so weird. I'm like, you're sitting on the wrong side.
I know.
All right. Lots of new stuff to get used to. Um, the first thing on our agenda is the election of officers. I can turn it down a little more. Is that better?
I'm hearing you throw this off the wall.
Yeah, I'm like, it's bouncing around a bit.
And this one too?
Is that better? Is that better? Good? Okay.
Well, unless it helps for the recording.
Just talk loud.
Yeah. All right. Hopefully that's good enough. Sorry, I'll sit back a smidge. All right. So, the election of officers. Um, we have one opening for vice president because Kristen Covell was our vice president and she's no longer with us. Does anybody have a motion they would like to make, thoughts regarding officers?
Do I? Oh, gosh, that was bad.
All right. I didn't know if I need to motion something or can I have a discussion?
Well, we need to have a motion, a second, and then discussion.
So you can nominate somebody if you would like to. You start with president and then, yeah.
Yeah, we usually do like a whole slate, but if you want to do individuals, it's like...
Um, okay. I motion that I run for secretary. And I guess Maggie, the open position is vice president, I'm not really running for vice president, I'd like to run for secretary. I propose Maggie as vice president. Kristen, I think he's done and also does president, so I propose you as president. And, oh, CJ as treasurer and CJ to stay treasurer.
Okay. So we have a motion for me for president, Maggie for vice president, CJ for treasurer, and Mallory for secretary. Do we have a second on that?
I second the motion.
Okay. And then up for discussion, was there something more you wanted to elaborate on with regard to that?
No, I just wanted to step up and do something and I don't feel like I'm ready for the vice president role because I would not want to be second to that. Um, so I think I would like to run for secretary.
Okay. I appreciate that.
All the volume can just go all the way down.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that, I think that sounds like a...
Well, I was just gonna, oh.
Turn your undervision one still.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I, at this time, have, I don't have an interest in serving as president. I think Kristen has done a great job. I think also CJ should stay the treasurer. I think you have a good understanding of what you need to have for the finance committee. I don't feel like I am ready to take that either. So I, I think I could go with, um, vice president. As long as president often continues to have good attendance. And even if you don't, even if you don't sometimes, okay.
Despite being one or two minutes late today, I do intend to hopefully not break a leg on a third Monday in any particular month.
Maggie, you're more elephant than me, so you could do that job.
Um, I just know for me, I, I understand school finance. I think it's very interesting, but I do think there's a huge learning curve to that and you've sat in that spot for a few years now, CJ. And so I think that just with having two brand-new board members, it would be nice to not have that position feel new also, um, at the table.
Yeah, yeah, I agree completely. I, I enjoy the role a lot. I like working with the superintendent Davis a lot. I think that makes a lot of sense as proposed, all four of them.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Well, if you're not interested, I'm interested in running for vice president as well. I know I had some other thing. I was gonna actually, I mean, I love you in the role, but I, and I love where you're at, but I would love to see, I was gonna nominate you as president, you know, and come, I mean, you know, to see, and then Kristen to help, you know, maybe help out with onboarding the new, like what Mary did. It was really, you know, really nice that Mary, um, onboarded, you know, like helped out with all the new stuff and answered a ton, a boatload of questions for us, you know, when we were, when we were coming on. It was just kind of a nice position to have, but...
I think that's a really good point and I'm wondering though if it would be, so Kristen and I have two years left and then you and...
Until you run for reelection.
Until you run for reelection. And then Holly and you and CJ have four years left, and Mallory two. So I'm almost wondering, like Mary did too, and Suzanne, if in, like if we had a new president at the beginning of 2026 and then Kristen could still be here to kind of like shepherd that new president for a year before she is reelected, if that's what she chooses to do. Because I do think there is value in, um, a sitting president mentoring an up-and-coming or one that has just been put in that position. I don't, I don't know. I feel like there's already some newness on the board. And I feel like it would be beneficial to maybe keep as many things streamlined as possible.
Yeah, I know we've sort of valued having a little bit of where we can consistency during these last few years when there's always been some sort of transition going on, whether it's an interim superintendent or a new superintendent or new board members. I think having that is very helpful. And in regard to the role of president, it is, um, an interesting position to be in and it does require, um, a whole sort of different skill set than when you have, when you sit in other seats. And I agree that there is definitely something to be said for, um, in some way, like having some sort of an overlap to help whoever is going to be the president next learn sort of the cadence of how things go and, um, some of the things that you don't otherwise get. Like I, Mary was very helpful in many respects to me, even though she wasn't the outgoing president when I became president, but she had been president before, so she was a very good and helpful resource to have and I was glad that she was there. So, yeah, I, and I, that is definitely something that I intend to do is, you know, whoever steps into this role after me is to be able to help them learn the ropes on that.
And I guess my first instinct would be to have some stability too, especially with having a new super. It'd be nice to have that relationship continue for a little while longer at least, um, between you two. And yes, I could fit in the treasurer role as well, but my schedule doesn't really allow for a lot of time to be spent with superintendent Julie Davis, um, and so I think secretary would fit me best at this point.
Okay.
I agree with Mallory that we need consistency. Superintendent Kirby's just come on in July. I think a year of consistency with leadership roles would be advisable at this point. That's what I'm looking at.
I would think too that perhaps, hopefully, that we're entering a time of a little bit less transition than we've had the last few years. Um, the superintendent Kirby just coming on and I'm anticipating like a healthy tenure there, um, so that won't change anytime soon.
I agree.
And, you know, um, we've got, you know, six and four years here left between, you know, five of you guys, so that, that is, I think we have some good, um, years ahead of us where things might feel a little bit calmer on the board, um, if we can just get through this, like, you know, next, this next one of you guys, Sean and Kelly kind of transitioning in.
Any further discussion?
I would be okay with that.
I have a, not point of information, I say point of order. When we vote on these, because I know last time, was it two years ago, we did a slate, but in our bylaws, does it state that we elect each one individually, like as it's written on here instead of doing a slate?
You don't have to do them individually. You can do them, four years that I've been on, we've done it as a slate.
I was just curious, does our bylaws state, doesn't our bylaws state?
The bylaws don't state specifically that they have to be voted on individually. So we have a motion and a second, um, for, again, to reiterate, for me to stay as president, CJ Mashad to stay as treasurer, for Maggie Tryon to move from secretary to vice president, and Mallory Neimeyer to move up to secretary. This is not something that requires a roll call vote, so if we could please just do a voice vote on this, all in favor of that slate of officers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And we are all set for our officers for this year. Thank you. Um, we are next up to public comment, but considering nobody is here in the audience, we will skip over that session, section.
Wait, we...
Oh, wait, you're right. Discussion items. I skipped over two things. Discussion items, finance and curriculum committee. So I gave this a little bit of thought and I'm searching on margin for pen, excuse me. And I've talked to a few of you about your desires and where you are and things like that and what would work best. Obviously with CJ being treasurer, it makes sense for him to stay on the finance committee. And I know Maggie is enjoying her role on curriculum and is doing a great job as the curriculum chair. And I think she desires to stay in that position.
And I lost, I lost a member of the committee.
And you lost a member of the committee, yes. And I talked to Mallory a bit with her work schedule. She's been finding it a little bit more difficult to come to curriculum meetings on Wednesday afternoons because meetings just tend to be in the afternoon for her work on Wednesdays. So she had an interest in moving over to the finance committee.
And I've lost two people.
So, and you're all alone. I'm like, are you driving the line?
It's me, yeah.
And so I thought it might make sense to move Mallory over to finance so that, you know, and plus you and Holly have had two years on your respective committees already and it's nice to get, be able to get a taste of each. Kelly knows, again, sort of like when we came in and Mallory really knows finance. Given Kelly's background of being a teacher, she knows a lot of the curriculum stuff already, so I thought it would be good to have her go on finance to start learning that. So then the fallout would make Sean on curriculum and then move Holly over to curriculum since you've had two years on finance, then this way you could also dip your toes in, start learning the curriculum side of things.
That's not, is that, is it still gonna be on Wednesdays up through?
That'll be on Wednesdays in the afternoon until July at least.
They're set, they're set through the end of this school year.
Yeah.
And then they will get reset starting again in the, in August. Is that a hard time?
When it could be renegotiated, right, in July?
Right, because we...
Theory and...
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can always...
Move things later.
Yeah, once, once we get through like this bank of them, we could reset them, yes.
Right. They've just historically been that, but they don't have to be. It's for whatever works for everybody.
So the hard part is, if Wednesdays don't work for you, the hard part for me is that I struggle to change the time, um, because of my class schedule. Is, is that, like, Wednesdays is kind of like, like today we knew about it because I gotta book it in advance, but Wednesdays usually is my day, I don't book anything. So, it's in my schedule with everything else with, so, I mean, we can talk about it later, but...
But that's a hard time for you?
That's right.
Is it, is it the day or the time?
It's, well, it's the day.
It's both.
It's the morning was, is a lot better because we, I've got other stuff, you know, so, but that's...
Okay. Okay.
And I'm guessing you talked to everybody else about their schedules already.
Well, I talked to Mall...
She's just really loud.
She talked to me because I had missed like four or five last year.
Yeah, so I was just trying to see, like, hey, is there, would it work better if we switched you to the other one just be, and she looked at her schedule, just because, yeah, there, there had been so many that were missed and I was like, I don't want people to have to miss their committee meetings.
In this clarification, what is it that binds the current meeting time through the end of the school year? Could it be like both?
They're published.
Yeah.
I mean, they're published, then they can't be altered at all, they can't be married or anything.
Yeah, they were, they were approved, but they can...
They can be moved.
Obviously, it's easier, yeah, I mean, I'm not suggesting we do, I just know if that was concrete.
And I'm not saying I couldn't do a different day. I, I think the time for me is the best time, but I could technically move into a different day.
It's just that when we got our schedule, I put them on the calendar and then I did everything else. So now to move things, you know, like the person could be, but, um, I don't...
And we don't have anything in place where we would switch committees over mid-year.
Right.
We can't say we're in July, we're going to then reorganize, right?
Yeah, it's one of those weird things where we organize in January, but we set the meetings in July and...
Could, we work it out until July where if you can make a Wednesday or something, we could do it or maybe face first off. Does that make sense?
Just sort of...
Like I could, I could kind of come to the, like, you, we can switch sometimes if we need to, if that makes sense. I know it won't be consistent for six months, but, you know, I think...
Are you suggesting like an alternate?
Yeah.
Yeah, like, well, what I'm wondering, I mean, I know I've done that for somebody else before I switched. Like when I first started, I was able to switch, but when we get our schedules and then you book stuff out, then when things come up, then I put other things on the schedule, you know, heading in. So what I was just wondering is, is that, you know, um, because I know when we did it before, eight-thirty in the morning was a really hard time for you to come in, that's why you picked three-thirty, you know, and for me, eight-thirty works, works tons better because of the other commitments, it's like it's done and then, you know, then I go on. So, um, yeah.
But is it, like for Sean and Kelly, is that, like, is three-thirty in the afternoon, like, I mean, we can, I don't know.
It works the best, after meetings are best for me when I work A R.
Okay.
And what about you, Kelly?
Um, I just, I have a schedule that's all over, so...
Yeah.
Because you're queuing up to be on finance, right?
Well, I was just gonna say, like, I mean, if, if Kelly can, if you could make afternoons work, I know you have experience with curriculum, I get that. Could you make it work or is that really hard?
It's really, we're like, we're looking at six months, right, to finish off the year?
Yeah.
Five.
I just, I have kids in school, so if, if my daughter needs a ride or something, I'm a single parent, so there's a difference there.
Yeah, so the afternoon could be tricky for you.
It could.
Depending on what's going on.
The committee meetings are posted as dates and times subject to change. So, I mean, it could change to fit scheduling as long as it, you know, worked for the administration as well.
Right.
Um, the key is I wouldn't want them to take place any later than Wednesday because of the backend of the work that needs to be done in our office than Kristen and I.
Right.
Okay.
And we already have curriculum on Tuesdays, so that would mean...
No Wednesdays.
Or Wednesdays, I mean. Curriculum is on Wednesday.
I mean, I could...
Then we have finance on Tuesday, so...
I could switch to Tuesdays fairly easily. Um, and I also could be flexible on time on Tuesdays as well. Probably the earliest I could do on a Tuesday would be nine.
Well, what I can do, I mean, do we have to decide on this right now or is this just like discussion?
No, we need to...
I think we have to decide.
Make out a committee.
Committee place, I mean, it's a big, big time.
Meeting time.
Meeting times and days can be there, we can work on later.
However, there's a committee coming up next week.
Next week. It's the first one of the year. I mean, we could keep, I mean, we could probably just keep that one as is. It's a little late to change that for anyone that might want to come from the public, I think. So I, like I said, I could make Tuesdays at, only once a month, I could make Tuesdays at nine work.
Well, we're eight-thirty to ten-thirty right now on Tuesdays.
Oh, you're Tuesday, that Monday, I think it was on Monday.
Tuesdays.
Oh, okay.
So what I'm, I mean, I, I mean, the thing with this is I could probably look at my calendar and see which ones I could make, but, I mean, I, like I said, I had planned the whole year out based on what we had already...
Yeah. Unfortunately, we changed, it's, it's weird that it's off sync like this, but yeah, we set the committees in January, so like you could theoretically be on two different committees during the course of the year.
I...
The school year.
I could also do Mondays at nine as long, I would have to leave by like ten-thirty. That's the only thing.
I can't.
You can't do Monday mornings.
Okay. Okay, okay, okay.
I mean, we just leave it Wednesdays right now and then I'll see what the schedule looks like and if I, I'm there and there, if not, I'm, I'm on, I'm not, I mean...
Could you do Holly?
Kristen will be there.
Yeah. In keeping with the idea of the afternoon for you, would a Monday or Tuesday afternoon be better?
I, I won't know until I look at the calendar and I didn't even think to bring it with me, I wasn't...
Okay.
So Tuesday afternoon for me, it's actually Wednesday and Thursday in the afternoon is when they put the meetings on and they don't do them way in advance. They do them, maybe a month, maybe a couple weeks in advance and I thought they just planned this. Okay. But Tuesdays tend to be better for best.
So what if usually you...
Well, here's the thing, maybe, I'm just guessing that it's gonna mess up their schedule, what they've got going on for them. So if we just leave it and then what I'll just do is I'll just work at whatever, if it's, if I can move it, I'll move it, if I can't move it, then I can't, I can't move it.
Okay, if you're okay with that, because I just, I mean, I do have a little bit of flexibility, so, but it doesn't, well, it works for everybody, that flexibility, so it's okay. I mean, if you wanted to try and make the best of it, is what you're saying, I guess?
Maybe we have a lot of choices.
Okay.
Right, I mean, it's, I mean, everybody else's schedules are pretty set, so I don't want to be the one that's, I'll be just taking the scales.
Well, yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I don't, I don't want to sacrifice and go, all right, now Mallory can make a bunch of meetings, but Holly, the whole point is to try to get people to be able to...
I kinda, I just think I just kinda assumed that we would stay on our committees and then Sean and Kelly would get, each get a committee, you know what I mean? Like it was the two spots that are open in each committee, it would make sense to put them on each committee and, you know, like I, I wasn't even thinking that we were gonna have an issue with.
What if we switched to Tuesdays?
Calendar. Tuesdays, I don't know, I think, can they do two meeting, meetings on Tuesdays?
At three, so?
I'm almost thinking that is what...
So Mallory, you can't do Wednesdays at all now for the rest of the year, is that... It's not that I can't, it's that, that's usually, if something's, a meeting with my upline is gonna pop up, it's on Tuesday. I think I do have them for the next few months, so I would know which ones I have in this.
So you're thinking of moving curriculum to Tuesday afternoon?
No, I...
The only complication I would probably, then it's like two meetings for admin on that day, right?
Yeah. I just leave it the way it is and I'll just look at my calendar, we'll just make the best of it, because I don't want to mess up their schedule, because I'm sure he's got, like, once he's got that on, you know, now he's got all the other stuff that's planned around it. It is just gonna mess up to me.
And his assistant's got to do it.
Right, so I, and I don't want to do that, so we'll just...
But we're planning on you for Tuesday morning.
If you're, if you're available on Mondays, that just might be just you.
You're gonna be like, if I can't move it, no.
Tuesday, we stay as it was?
This next Tuesday, I would, I would mind, because it's on my calendar. Already.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do...
The following one won't matter because I'm not around for the, and the next one I'm on, I'm on the phone, so it won't matter. I literally will make the next Wednesday meeting, but I'll be on a phone call.
Well, we'll, I mean, we'll have to talk about that because we tend to not call in to meetings because you can't participate on a phone call.
You can't participate.
So it's better to have somebody sit in for you than call in because you can't, I can't participate, but I can still listen to the information.
Correct.
Or saying if we can have three physical interacting members, that's better than two and a participant. It, I think, I think when we've done that, like when Mary has done that or when you, whoever's done it, when we haven't had somebody who can fill the spot, we just have to be...
I mean, and, well, and M A S B, I think, has spoken a few times about this thing that they recommend not even having somebody call in. I, I, I can't remember all the details of why, because if you're calling in and you can't participate, so it's not like you're a quorum, but they, like Brad Van Assick has been like, no, 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 you don't call in.
But I did call them as well too and it's an informational meeting, you're getting the information that we're voting on, so then we're able to ask additional questions later via email and such anyway.
Okay, well, I'd be happy, yeah, we can follow up with M A S B and just to make sure, because we don't want to make, we don't want to do anything wrong.
That'd be a good goal for this year, to get a, to get a real official answer.
Right.
Always refer back to.
Yeah.
The way we, the way we post them, you, you shouldn't be calling in and that, that's the, um, the guidance that we've had for the last few years since the, um, all the COVID changes and all of that. So because of how we post them, that, that is the way. But if you want to continue to pursue and ask specific questions, I would say you can because I've asked that question before, because we had a previous district where we had some individuals that really militaries, the primary reason, that you can do that. So, um, that's the difficult part.
Can, can we look to see what the, what the law is not, like, you know, I mean, I was curious, because I, we looked into this once before, when I, when I first came on.
Right, we've looked into it a couple of times.
And then they said, no, and then we came back and said, yes, Holly, you are correct, you can call in. So now we're changing it back to, that I can't, if I, I'm, I was just curious, I mean, I'm not...
I do think that their communication is a little bit all over the board about this. I don't think anyone's gonna give a real clear answer.
No, and I don't think there's a law that says that you absolutely cannot. I think it's just a matter of what, I think our bylaws or our policies.
Well, I think it's a great area and is it one that's really worth violating?
Risk exposure, you know, or just...
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think it sounds like we're gonna try it like this and everyone's gonna do the best that they can.
Yeah.
And we have an alternative if we, if people can't make it.
Right, so we will do CJ, Mallory, Kelly on finance, Maggie, Holly, and Sean on curriculum. Next week, you two will switch because you already had it on your calendars, just, just switch that way. And we will fill in holes, hopefully we'll be able to minimize times when people aren't able to attend their particular committee meetings and, uh, we will go from there.
Will we continue with the president serving as the...
Yes, I will, as long as I'm able, I will fill in if somebody can't make it. Please let me know as much in advance as possible. All right, then we are on to approval of minutes. This is our only, like, voting, otherwise if other, you know, like we don't have a consent agenda or anything this time because we haven't had any of the other meetings yet, they're next week. So can I please have a motion to approve our meeting minutes from December?
I will motion that we approve our meeting minutes from December.
I'll second the motion.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, we are now, actually officially up to public comment, unlike last time, that was a false alarm. Um, public comment, but we have no public here, so we will just skip right over that. Um, and so now I would like a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of conducting the superintendent's evaluation per M C L fifteen, that two-six-eight-one A.
I motion to go into closed session.
A second. A second.
Okay, and on this, we need a roll call vote to move into closed session.
Dr. Rashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kerma, Ms. Promod?
Yes.
Mr. War?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Neimeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Dr. Balton?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan, yes.
Okay, we are in closed session, thank you. We are back into open session now. Um, thank you everybody for participating in the superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. Kirby for very thorough going through of the two goals uh, that have been established for this year, which are enhancing, enhancing the safety and security of all the schools in the district as well as um, enhancing overall trust within the school district uh, through communications efforts. Looking forward to one more quarterly intermediate, uh, one before the final one for the year, which is in. Okay, um, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a few things, um, I guess first just welcome to Sean and Kelly for your first meeting, so uh, glad to have you here, congratulations. Uh, the January twentieth is uh, professional development day, professional learning day for our staff. We'll, we'll continue to uh, work around um, safety and security. Uh, just a reminder that it's no students on that day, so parents will make sure that they have that on their calendars. And then on January twenty second, we're having our junior kindergarten meeting, informational meeting. Uh, so looking forward to that um, as well, our instruction team will be communicating with our parents and, and making sure that everybody understands what our options are there, so. Uh, the last piece I just, that I would just share is that Christine Anis, who's been a longtime H R assistant superintendent and uh, just a wealth of knowledge, is gonna retire at the end of this uh, school year. So we will be posting her position here in uh, January and then uh, looking at that department as a whole as far as uh, you know, how to move forward and those kinds of things, but just been a tremendous asset and she will definitely help us uh, have a successful transition uh, through her retirement, so.
Thank you. Board communications, uh, I only have one, which is also to welcome Kelly and Sean. Hopefully this has been not too painful for our first meeting, uh, but, and hopefully, you know, we're getting out on time. I don't really have anything else other than, you know, I hope everybody had a really good Christmas and New Year's holiday break and got to enjoy, rest and enjoy and spend some time with family. Anybody else have a board communication? Okay, then is there any other business before the board? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned, thank you everybody.